All right, I think we are ready to begin our deliberations for the evening. Um, let's see, so why don't we begin with reports from the DIES? And Mr. Ballner, of course, you'd be the first. So anything happening to UVA?
Um, there's always stuff happening. I'll be quick though. I, I don't have a whole lot to report other than just the, um, just reminder that, that fall semester starts on August 24th and we'll be in pretty full swing around grounds probably starting next week as first years are coming back for orientation and all that. Um, the other, the other, another thing to note with that is that the bus schedule for UTS has changed versus last year. They're adding a little bit more coverage and frequency. And so if you are interested in seeing those routes, you can go to the UTS website and find them pretty easily. They're not back to what they were, but they're, they're, uh, fair, they're fairly more robust than say, so.
An important question for me is, uh, will I be able to go to a football game this year?
As far as I know, there's, yeah, as far as I know, there, there's a number of them on schedule, including a Friday night game and in late September that will be a, a big test, I think for.
So, well, that'd be cool. And are they going to do Paint the Town Orange?
That I don't, I do not know that.
All right, thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Russell.
Um, I just wanted to quickly update that the last, last month council approved the design for the Fontaine Avenue streetscape, which is a smart scale project. And, um, what that means now is that final design will continue while property is acquired for right of way and um, is projected to construction to begin sometime in 2023.
Thanks. Mr. Stoltenberg.
Sorry, didn't know anything.
Yep. Uh, so I had two meetings this month. Uh, the first, the MPO technical committee met, um, and we reviewed potential smart scale submissions, uh, projects for the next round of smart scale. Uh, so there are five projects under consideration right now. Um, including, uh, District Avenue Roundabout, uh, up by Stonefield, uh, improvements on fishery, uh, improvements on Apon, um, and the Ryvanna, uh, Quarter Bridge. Uh, I'm either missing a fifth or those, there were four. Uh, there was one other project in consideration that was proposed by a member of, uh, C-TAC, the Citizens Technical Advisory or Transportation Advisory Commission, which was like, uh, fly over, uh, leaving 29 and 250, um, into kind of the middle of 29 up to hydraulic. Uh, but that was seemed to be, uh, too expensive. Uh, it's not in our constrained, uh, or any long range part of the long range transportation plan. Um, and so the decision was made to put that off, um, at least until we do another long range planning process. We also had a meeting of, uh, TJ PDC, uh, which is starting its process of reviewing applications, uh, for a new executive director. And, uh, also approved the, uh, regional, uh, affordable housing plan. Um, so that goes a long way towards generalizing, uh, the affordable housing plan of the city and the county, um, and adding all of our outlying areas, uh, with recommendations, um, for what they can do. Lastly, uh, as I'm sure many of you have seen, uh, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has released the first part of its, uh, six assessment report. Um, so most of the stuff in there is bad news. Uh, some of it is tentatively possibly good news if we act on it. Um, and I would encourage all of you to read it. Um, long story short, uh, we are currently at about one degree Celsius of warming, um, over the baseline. Uh, we are essentially guaranteed to go past one and a half degrees Celsius at this point. Um, and we're most likely looking at three degrees or more, um, unless we see a very significant reduction, uh, in greenhouse gas emissions. Um, the good news is, uh, if we can reach net zero by the middle of the century, uh, we will hit one and a half degrees Celsius and then fall back, uh, and, and start to decline. Um, and the problems won't keep getting worse. Um, however, uh, that would be a significant departure from current trends um, and requires significant change, um, in, in how we live our lives and how we make governmental policy. Um, so again, I encourage you all to read that, um, and think about that as we consider our policies moving forward.
Very cool. Mr. Bob.
I have the updates. Thank you.
And is Ms. Dow? I don't think she is. So Mr. Solit.
The Housing Advisory Committee met on July 21st, uh, met with some new city staff, uh, one Ashley Marshall is a new deputy city manager. Uh, Sam Sanders, also a new deputy city manager, uh, talking mostly about how do we actually implement this nice housing plan that we've got? And the answer so far is staffing. We're going to hire people to do the work, which is very exciting and, and what I wanted to hear. Uh, Mr. Sanders, uh, broke some news that, uh, a new hire at NDS has been made and I see that that isn't the daily progress. Uh, I believe it's, uh, Mr. Francis, a new director of different development services. Uh, and, uh, his current priority is hiring a new housing coordinator to help us answer these complicated quantitative housing questions that keep coming up, which I'm very excited about personally. That is my report. Thank you.
And you actually intimately involved in the hiring of the new India's director. So thank you for your efforts there as well. Ms. Lihendra.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so over, since our last meeting, I attended a BA, a Board of Architectural Review meeting on July 20th. We had, it was a very quick meeting. We had one certificate of appropriateness that, uh, was passed. And then we had a, uh, a long discussion with the designers for the new courthouse building. Um, this was a preliminary discussion, uh, where we had the opportunity to review and comment upon some of the very conceptual designs, blocking designs really, um, for the, uh, new courthouse. So that was, that was very interesting. The tree commission, um, met the same night as our planning commission last month, so I wasn't able to attend and I have not gotten any minutes from that meeting, so I can't really report on it. And August is going to be quiet too, because there is no tree commission meeting in August. So they, uh, stay tuned for September. Um, in other things that I attended, I was asked to, uh, attend a, a meeting with residents, three residents of the Meadowbrook and Rugby Road communities. Um, and this was to listen to their concerns uh, regarding the comprehensive plan recommendations that have been put forward to this point. Um, and in particular, well, a- as a result of, of my listening to them, I did recommend that they put this, uh, in a written form. Um, that was sent to us, uh, last, well, sent to me last week. I reviewed it and then have asked that it be sent on to the other commissioners, uh, the council and to our consultants, uh, very importantly. Um, and there, in jest or in, in, in summary, they are challenging the three main justifications for making changes, significant changes to the land use zoning. The first justification, how the population growth is, uh, being, uh, anticipated, how it's, uh, what, what is dri- what is driving or what, how that population is being looked at in the future. Um, also secondly, that Charlottesville, they're challenging the idea that Charlottesville is landlocked and therefore needs to be upzoned. And then thirdly, um, they are challenging the method used for calculating cost burden households. Um, so, uh, I, I found that the, um, their presentation, um, and, and, uh, discussion with me was very thoughtful and clearly, um, uh, uh, was based upon a, a great deal of work. Um, so I have, uh, I would love to hear the consultants', um, uh, response to some of these, um, arguments, counter arguments that have been put forward. Thank you.
All right, and for my report there, um, unfortunately I, um, had personal issues. I did not make any of the, uh, meetings, uh, this, uh, month. But there are two things, uh, two statements I will make. Uh, one is we have an annual meeting happening in September. At that meeting, we elect need to elect a new chair and a new vice chair. And we've asked our, uh, senior commissioners, uh, to me, I mean, Ms. Ms. Dow and, uh, Mr. Lihendra to, um, to nominate, uh, to work to nominate, uh, two new offices.
That's senior, senior as in the number of years we've served, not how old we are, right?
Uh, yes, sir. The other point I want to make is, uh, I think Jennifer, um, Jennifer and to the consultants, it would be very helpful in our meeting when we get together, uh, not this meeting, but I think we have a meeting later in the month, that we do understand the data behind some of the assumptions you've made, because, uh, there, there is some debate as, as it relates to how the day, what, what methods were used to, to get data. So a little feedback on that would, would be of great value. With that, I'm going to toss the ball to, um, Ms. Creasy and, and yes.
All right. Well, we've got, uh, quite a few things coming up. Um, uh, Lyle announced that we have a new director, um, James Brace, who will be joining us, uh, September 13th, I believe. This is first day, so, um, he will be, uh, joining the team at that point. Um, so we will welcome him. Uh, that is the week of your meeting, so, um, I'm sure I can compel him to come to our meeting that week. Um, so you all have the opportunity to meet him in person, um, or virtually. We're still going to be virtual. Um, so that's one thing. Um, the, Ms., uh, Chair, uh, Mitchell noted the annual meeting and so, uh, we'll have some activities that occur, uh, based on that. So do keep that in mind. Um, uh, another thing, I figured somebody would, would touch on this, but, um, just a reminder, uh, tomorrow evening at six o'clock, there's a meeting on the Belmont Bridge. Um, and it's a meeting to provide background on, uh, the construction project to come. There's been quite a bit of activity over there right now, um, and, uh, there'll be more to come. And so that meeting is going to touch on that. So I will put in the chat, the, uh, link, uh, for anyone who's listening or for, um, uh, commissioners as well. Uh, if you go to, I believe it is, let me, let me just confirm where you would go to register, um, Belmontbridge.org. Um, is where you would go to register for that meeting and it's, it's looks to be, uh, very informative, especially for people who spend any amount of time in downtown Charlottesville. It'd be good to have an idea of what's going on, um, with that project, because it's going to affect us all in some way. Um, but we're looking forward to the results down the road, definitely. Um, so you all have two more touch points, um, as a group this month, um, on the 24th, uh, which is the third Tuesday. Um, we will be, um, no, that's the fourth Tuesday. We have five Tuesdays this month. Just keep that in mind. Um, we'll have our regular work session date and, uh, we will have preliminary discussions on both Park Street and MACA sites. They're, uh, preparing some rezoning applications. And, uh, this is an opportunity for you all to weigh in on, um, their proposal at this point. They have outlined a number of questions in their report, which will, um, be helpful for a robust conversation uh, with them and, uh, they'll take that feedback and we'll move to, uh, the next step of the process there. Um, they are also currently having a community meeting right now, um, on that project. And so we'll have some feedback from that. Um, and of course this will be a public opportunity as we move forward through that process. But those are two pretty big, uh, developments that, um, will be coming our way. And then on the 31st, uh, which is our fifth Tuesday in August, um, is, uh, our meeting with the consultants where we'll review changes that have been proposed, um, to the uh, comprehensive plan and the future land use map, uh, based on the comments that we've received in the last comment periods. And so, um, we, we expect that meeting will probably take a little bit of time. Um, we'll have, as, as usual, we'll have materials to you all for both of those in week in advance. Uh, I know the consultants are working very, very hard, um, to get things moving along. And we're probably going to be right up to the line getting those materials together. Um, but we'll have some opportunity for you all to review in advance. They'll be open for public as well. And then the, uh, time for, uh, discussion at that August 31st meeting. And we'll see where things stand at that point. So, um, that is, I think, everything I have to share with you guys at this point.
And I think we are then ready for matters to be presented by the public that are not on the formal agenda. This will be the only, uh, opportunity that we'll get, have, uh, tonight to, to hear from the public. There are no other public, uh, public areas after this. So this is your, this is a public chance to give us any feedback as, as, as related to any of the work we do. So, Mr. Rice, would you see if there's anyone who would like to speak and bring them in?
Chair Mitchell, and yeah, at this time, if you'd like to address the planning commission on matters not on the formal agenda, please click your raise hand icon. Or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. We'll call on you on the order of hands raised and you'll have three minutes for comment. And we do have a hand raised and it's Mr. James Groves. James, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, James.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Good. Okay. Good evening. Uh, my name is James Groves. I'm a city resident and I teach about climate change and sustainability at UVA. Uh, as Commissioner Stoltenberg, uh, noted a few minutes ago, uh, the United Nations issued a new comprehensive science report on climate change yesterday. Uh, the first such report since 2013. Uh, without surprise, the report states that our lifestyles are dangerously eroding the natural world around us, setting the stage for increasingly difficult living conditions for everyone and everything. Uh, having scanned the new climate report, I find myself once again reflecting upon what our community should be doing to contribute to climate solutions. Among other things, that reflection has me thinking about the city's draft comprehensive plan and concluding that the current draft lacks important, specific recommendations that should almost certainly be included in the city's approach to addressing climate change. For instance, uh, the current draft does not recommend the use of commercial property assessed clean energy financing to upgrade the energy efficiency, renewable energy and water management systems of commercial and multifamily buildings of five or more units. Additionally, it does not recommend creation of a city green bank that could finance similar climate friendly upgrades to smaller residential structures. Furthermore, the draft plan does not consider the critical role that city financed micro mobility could play in simultaneously addressing climate change and delivering social justice and equity. Uh, investments in sustainable sustainability solutions like CPace Financing, a green bank, and micro mobility solutions could put critical dollars in the pockets of our most needy neighbors year after year while stabilizing the climate for all of us. Instead, the current comprehensive plan draft proposes to invest millions in one-time tax relief, temporary operating subsidies for housing and large expensive transit buses. By and large, such proposed investments won't contribute to lasting wealth accumulation and housing availability in our low income community, and they won't address climate change. While the current draft, uh, plan rightfully envisions the investment of millions towards equity and housing affordability, it fails to propose investments that could simultaneously address equity, housing affordability and climate change. Having verbalized, uh, these few thoughts, I'll send you a follow-up email with some additional details on this critical issue. And in closing, let me just say that let's not miss the opportunity to address housing affordability, equity and climate change, three important issues deserving our timely attention. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
And thank you, James. And that email would be of great value. If you could send that to Ms. Creasy, she will then circulate it to the rest of us. And that would be very helpful. Ms. Price.
And if anybody else would like to address the commission at this time, please click your raise hand icon. Chair Mitchell, I see no other hands.
Right, in that case, we can move on to the minutes. Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes or are there any, Rory, did you, um, did you figure out the, uh, the items that you wanted to address? Are we good to go?
Uh, no, just a spelling correction on materials and.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move with those corrections?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and it's, um, there is no public area, no joint medium of council, and it is, what time is it? It is, we don't need to wait until six, Ms. Creasy, to begin, do we? Okay.
No, you have to begin.
In that case, let's start with the consultant report on Seville plans together.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, okay. Caught myself on that one. Hey, everyone, um, nice to see you. Um, I appreciate the, the comments from Mr. Groves. I look forward to reviewing the email. I'm glad that report was brought up this evening. It's something important that we'll need to consider here. In this process and, you know, with the ongoing climate action plan process. But in any case, that's not what I'm here to talk about right now. I'm here to give you sort of a, a brief update as far as what we're thinking for the next steps in the schedule. So, uh, Mr. Rice, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the, the two slides I sent to you. Thank you. Let's say this one, we can skip right past. Uh, the next slide has a brief table with some milestones that you heard about, um, from Missy. At least the first couple. So, uh, what we've heard from you all is that you'd like to see us, um, have a comprehensive plan to counsel this year. And so, uh, we've, we worked backward from that, um, and that's the schedule you see here allows for a little bit of flexibility as needed. So, uh, right now, just to step back to a date that's not on here, uh, we've been, um, finalizing the summary of what we heard during the engagement period and starting on revisions to the, the land use map and the, the chapter, specifically the land use urban form and historic and cultural preservation chapter. Those will be the two topics of our conversation on August 31st. Uh, we will be sharing with you prior to that meeting and with everyone, um, uh, we'll be sharing a, that so, engagement summary, which will, uh, provide a bit more detail than we did when we met with you last time. Uh, but largely has the same findings of what we heard overall. So we'll show, we'll show that with you in advance of our meeting on August 31st. And then on August 31st, we'll come to you with what we're proposing as some adjustments to the future land use map and the land use urban form and historic cultural preservation chapter to respond to what we heard. Uh, we'll get feedback from you and from the community on that. And we plan to, um, you know, make it known that we're, that we're meeting with you. We'll be sharing information about these next steps following our meeting tonight, just in case there were any adjustments. Uh, we haven't, um, widely, um, sent it out yet, but it is on the website. So if, if you're listening and you want to attend that meeting, you can certainly register for it now. Uh, following that meeting, the next time we'll meet with you is just a couple of weeks after that, um, we'll share with you for that meeting. The, uh, rest of the chapters, provisions to the chapters, those will be sort of redlined for your review. Uh, but maybe, uh, perhaps more, um, not more importantly, but one thing you will not have seen before that, uh, point is the implementation chapter, which is a key, key piece of what, um, will make the plan happen. So we'll be sharing that with you at that point as well. So obviously we know September 14th, um, that's not the only item on your agenda for that meeting. Uh, we're not planning to do a line by line through that. Uh, during that meeting, but we will share those chapters with you, uh, in advance and we'll look forward to getting your, your comments on that. Uh, we will also be in mid-September meeting with the steering committee. I'll be following up with them tomorrow, uh, timing for that meeting. Likely in one of the days following our meeting with you on the 14th. And following, uh, those sets of meeting, we'll be working toward, uh, firstly, a joint hearing with the planning commission and council on October 12th, and then, uh, the first council hearing on November 15th, following up on, I believe it's the sixth. Missy, is that right? With the second reading.
Correct.
So that would be, yes. So this is, um, this is what we've laid out as a schedule. I guess, are there any questions about that overall?
Got a question for you and Missy. The second reading is that when council actually votes up or down on whatever recommendation we make?
That is typically what occurs.
And the new council takes office first meeting in January.
Correct.
Kind of tight, but okay.
It's, it's pretty tight. There's, there's a smidge wiggle, um, but it's, it's very tight and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll just see where, where things go.
But, um, so that's our plan. So I guess, um, I guess keep an eye out, uh, for emails from us or from Missy with, uh, the packets in advance of those meetings, of course. Yeah, happy to answer other, any other questions.
I have one. Um, I see where the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission has adopted a regional affordable housing plan. Had Jenny has, uh, the consultants, uh, are they aware of this? Have they been studying it to see what impact it has on the city's comprehensive plan?
Uh, we have, uh, I believe we've begun to review it, but have not, we've not sat down and had a discussion about how it may need to impact the plan, but that is something we, we'll do and can talk about when we, we meet with you on the 31st.
Yeah, the city's portion of the regional plan is based on the housing study that was just recently completed. Um, so, uh, that is very clearly linked in, into that and, uh, peeking at it from a regional perspective on the comp plan as a whole, um, will make sense to do here, short order.
So would there be any benefit for, um, the planning commission to get a presentation by the, uh, the uh, district commission on their, uh, housing affordability plan and their regional plan to see how we, we fit in? I mean, we're part of the region, right? I, I, I'm, I'm unaware of it. So I, I, uh, can, uh, admit my ignorance. I was surprised to read the article in the paper about it.
So Rory is, um, Rory is on that, on that board and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, what I would say is, is the regional plan is sort of a superset of, uh, each of the two, the town, the Alamo County and Charlottesville's individual plans plus extra recommendations for outlying counties. Um, so it makes locality by locality recommendations. But in Charlottesville's case, those all come straight from the affordable housing plan that we passed. Um, so I, I do actually think it would be useful, uh, to hear from them. Probably can't press Nick into that tonight. We do have him here, uh, but at some point, uh, to hear kind of what the recommendations are for other counties. Uh, but, um, I wouldn't say it's like a blocking item, uh, or really super relevant, um, for this comp plan process. Um, you know, Alamo has its, uh, you know, unique housing plan as well. And I think that's worth a review. Uh, that's pretty close to being passed or just passed except for the incentives piece, something like that. Um, and, uh, so that's like a really fleshed out thing. And then the really new piece, uh, of this regional plan is for, uh, you know, Nelson, Fluvana, Green and, uh, Louisa. So, um, I, I mean, obviously we're all part of the same metro area and the same overall housing market. Um, and I think it's important for us to keep apprised of what's going on out there. Um, but, uh, you know, I don't think it, you know, necessarily changes anything, uh, with regard to this timeline.
I would just hoping that there was some, something addressing mass transit routes, um, and how they're connected between counties and regionally, um, so that they can be, uh, taken advantage of for locating affordable housing. I, 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 I just hopeful that there was something.
There's a bit about, um, transportation in that plan and in particular like transportation costs, uh, from commutes. Um, but I think the big thing that will happen with regional transportation is, uh, we, uh, actually didn't mention this in my report, um, but TJ PDC just awarded a contract, uh, to a firm or actually a consortium of firms, Akon, EPR and Jared Walker and Associates for a transit vision plan. Um, and the goal of that process, uh, is to create a real overarching vision of, uh, what we want to see out of our transit system. Um, from frequency to coverage, um, you know, fix. Um, and the goal of that process, uh, is to create a real overarching vision of, uh, what we want to see out of our transit system, um, from frequency to coverage, um, you know, fixed route and, uh, you know, other forms like para-transit like John, um, and how it should cover our area. Um, so that will be starting in earnest, I think, next quarter. Um, and I think that will be the thing to keep an eye on for that.
Excellent. Uh, yeah, I, I don't see the affordable housing and mass transit routes, uh, to be independent of each other. I think they're tightly closely tied together. Thank you, Rory.
Yep, and I agree.
You too. Um, and I want to note, um, that Jody reminded me when, when you spoke, uh, in terms of, you know, you mentioned the discussion you had with the Rugby Meadowbrook, representatives from that neighborhood and, um, certainly, you know, understand, uh, there may be some, uh, questions out there. And so we, we have been, uh, along with this summary of what we heard, we've been compiling responses to what we'll, we're calling sort of FAQs, frequently asked questions, and those, certain, the, those types of questions certainly are, are within there. So we are working to, um, with, with HRNA and the rest of the team to make sure we do have responses to those that we'll share as well.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, Jenny.
Yep.
Um, so my question for Jenny, uh, is, you know, about this, uh, the August 31st work session and what our goal is coming out of that, uh, or, and, and what our materials will be going in. Are, are you planning on giving us an updated draft going into that? And then are we planning on coming out of that work session with, uh, effectively all the feedback to get to a final draft?
Uh, I think ideally that, that will be what we hope for, given the accelerated or the, the schedule that we're working under. If it, you know, uh, if coming out of that meeting, we need to revisit the schedule or the milestones after that, we will, but that's, that would be what I, we hope to come out with. And we will be giving you that, that map and the land use, um, chapter ahead of, ahead of that meeting.
And, uh, is there any consideration to potentially a September work session? Um, or is that the comms department, communications department can't run the webinar or?
Um, oh, I can speak with Missy, uh, with NDS about that, um, to see, you know, maybe perhaps instead of having that during your September 14th, meeting, is that what you're referring to? Or having that addition to that?
I would probably suggest, I mean, this is made up right now, I just saw the schedule, but to have it kind of tentatively on the calendar in case there are additional discussion items, um, ahead of going to our joint hearing in October. Um, I, I think the overall timeline to me, you know, makes lots of sense. Um, you know, December final vote is, uh, it's actually after the, the six-month delay that was requested, uh, by the slow the vote folks back in May. Um, so I think that seems reasonable. Uh, my concern is just the, not the calendar schedule or timeline, but the, you know, number of meetings and, and amount of work to be done timeline. Um, and, you know, I think back in 2018, we were meeting every week, uh, and sometimes twice a week, uh, to get the stuff done. Um, obviously, we've offloaded a lot of the actual work onto you. Um, but I wouldn't speak for my fellow commissioners, but I would imagine that we would be willing to, um, you know, put in an extra, a second meeting in a month, um, which we used to have every month, um, in order to make sure we get this done and get everything, all the work we need to get done, done for it.
Okay, I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up and nods, so, uh, Missy will coordinate with, with, with you on that, if that works for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at the calendar and the schedule and the advertising and all those things that have to happen. And there's a lot of balls that would have to be tossed in the air and, uh, we, uh, we, we, we have some guidance from council and, uh, we're gonna need to do the best we can at this point in time to, uh, to move that forward. Um, though if we find that, uh, that there's something that needs to change along the way, we, we have to make sure that, uh, our governing body is, is aware and is supportive of that.
Uh, we remember when we met Friday mornings at eight o'clock, I'll bring doughnuts.
Why do you do that nowadays, just from home? Sorry, Commissioner.
The only comment I'll make is that slippage is, uh, not an option. Um, we do not want to have to educate a new council. As it relates to this project, slippage is not an option. We, if it slips, we could be looking at another couple of years.
Well, that was certainly a goal in putting out this schedule. So, um, you know, I guess it will be additional time for you all to review things, um, as we're moving along here. And, um, so we, you know, we'll look forward to, uh, meeting with you several times to, to get your input. I guess any other, uh, questions for me? All right.
We're good. All right, Ms. Creasy, I guess we're ready for the, uh, Red Vanu River Corridor presentation.
Sure, um, I think we're gonna be handing the time over, while I know they've got a team here, but I think we're handing it over to Sandy, Nick.
I will be happy to introduce you, but actually, um, Nick and, um, Sharice are going to be sharing the presentation today. So we'll hand it over to Nick.
Good evening, um, Mr. Rice. I don't know if you're able to pull up that presentation, um, but if you are, then we're perfect. So, all right, well, it's great to see everybody again. Um, this time talking about the urban Red Vanu River Corridor plan. I will note, just based on the comments about the regional housing affordable plan, um, we're happy to meet, um, and, and figure out a time that we can come and present, uh, the work that was done on that. So, Christine Jacobs, our interim executive director is on the call tonight, and we can, like I said, certainly touch base offline to schedule, um, what that process might look like moving forward. But, back to the Red Vanu River plan, um, next slide, please. Uh, so just, uh, kind of a high level background, um, for those that may have not been, uh, as involved in this process in the past. This is a joint effort between both Alamo Marl County and the city of Charlottesville, um, kind of rooting back to discussions in 2015, talking about sort of priority areas that both the city and the county could work together on. Um, so the goal of this phase of this planning project was to develop, a vision and an action plan for that urban section of the corridor. It is a phased approach. The first phase was an existing conditions kind of inventory, uh, that was completed in 2018. This current phase, the visioning phase that we're calling it, um, is, uh, occurring right now. And then should there be a, a third phase, that would be kind of getting into more of the in-depth implementation and the development of a master plan. Uh, next slide, please. So looking, you know, when we're talking about this urban section of, of the, the river, we're looking at, um, from Penn Park as the northern terminus down to I-64 as that southern terminus. Um, so this was defined by the technical committee, which was made up of staff from the city and county. This is a more concentrated effort than, uh, was done in that first phase. Um, that first phase was just a very simple, um, kind of generic, uh, study area, which was a half-mile buffer from the centerline of the river, um, up to the south work reservoir, and then went down to, um, the Millen Road Bridge near Shadwell to the south. Um, so again, a much more concentrated effort in this, this phase. Uh, next slide, please. So timeline wise, this project kicked off in earnest of summer of 2019, where we brought the technical committee back. We've reviewed the existing maps from that phase one and started working on refining that, kind of that need defining the study area. And then in September of 2019, we did our first, uh, public engagement push, which was a tabling at the Flow River Fest. Throughout the winter of 2020, we started kind of developing a business outreach strategy and, um, kind of targeted outreach efforts, obviously COVID kind of threw a wrench in, in all of those, discussions at first. So we had to regroup and kind of think through that, um, a different approach. Um, so working through that, we came up with kind of these, um, you know, virtual webinars, which occurred in the fall of 2020, um, and then concurrently doing some of that plan drafting. And then, uh, this year, working on the, the final documentation and, and drafting of the final plan. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna turn it over to Sharice. She's gonna kind of talk through the feedback that we've heard so far, and then just do a high-level overview of the benchmarking that was done.
Hi, everyone. So, um, the steering committee, um, held public meetings via Zoom due to COVID in September and April. Signs were also placed along the river corridor to direct users to our, the Urban River Corridor website to offer feedback. And October 2022 webinars were held on Zoom. And notifications for those webinars were sent via mailings and email notifications to property owners within the project area and to stakeholder groups. A webinar was also held on the Red Vanu River Bridge and pedestrian, excuse me, pedestrian crossing feasibility study in November of 2020. Next slide, please. So there were 70 unique comments gathered on the website, most centered on protecting and preserving the environment and recreational, at, at the minute. Next slide, please. So, um, wi- within the, uh, public webinars, 44 people attended and 88% agreed with the vision statement. Uh, we did a poll, sorry, back up a little bit. We did a participant, participant poll within the webinars, and 88% of those participants agreed with the vision statement. Um, some of the feedback included, as you can see on the slide, um, is that need to communicate more active stewardship role, protecting the natural environment, and, uh, phrases relating to encouraging additional recreational use, like paddling and, you know, snorkeling and all of those things. Um, a different array of those were, um, part of the comments. Um, you can also see on the chart that most particip- participants were overwhelmingly okay with guiding principles. Both public safe, safety measures and historic places and cultural features, protecting those, um, and, and, and enhancing and, and, um, talking and thinking about public safety measures, all of the people who participated in that question, you know, they were very favorable. Um, but also, um, environmental protection of the riparian system also scored highly, but nothing really scored low, um, among the people who were, who participated in the polls. Next slide, please. Um, we also had, um, stakeholder discussions, um, with, uh, targeted discussions with technical committee members and subject matter experts, and the following fields, um, that you see up here, environmental protection, recreational activities, public health, safety and welfare, development and redevelopment, historic places and cultural features and multi-purpose trails and bridges. Next slide, please. And we also did a benchmarking. Um, the technical committee helped identify benchmarking communities, although we cannot locate a nearly identical community. We did find four with similar themes, and they're the ones that you see on your screen right now. And the common themes were, you know, they had trails and networks and, and access, um, local history, rich local history, um, and they, um, really wanted to foster connections to the water. And some other considerations are the four you have here, um, accessibility, weight finding, navigation, environmental consideration, and zoning. Um, so next slide, please. So I'm gonna hand it back over to my colleague Nick to talk about the vision statement.
Yes, thanks, Sharice. So through all of those various touchpoints, um, that were, Sharice went over, this vision statement was crafted, that the Red Vanu River flowing through Charlottesville and Alamo Marl County is one of the community's greatest assets. In and near Freebridge, Woolen Mills, in the Pantots area, the river corridor is and will be a dynamic place where people can experience a natural environment, healthy outdoor activities, venues, peaceful and serene opportunities, and important historic and cultural points of interest. So, based on feedback that we got, um, from that steering committee meeting in April of this year, um, there were a couple tweaks, which is what you see here. Um, and again, that was vetted through both the steering committee made up of, um, planning commissioners, elected officials, and then citizen-appointed, folks on there, and then through the technical committee as well. Uh, next slide, please. So, and have helped achieve that overall vision statement, uh, these guiding principles were again developed, so looking at environmental protection and stewardship, recreational activities, public health, safety and wellness measures, new development and redevelopment, historic places and cultural features, and then multi-purpose trails and bridges. And you can see, kind of what's, what's, uh, written there to the side. But those also tie back into kind of the higher level recommendation categories that we'll, um, dump into. Next, so next slide, please. So when we get into the recommendations, this is that implementation matrix that was, uh, is separate from, um, the current draft plan. We still have to incorporate that into the, the templated draft, but this is just kind of a high-level, overview of, um, what the implementation matrix would look like to help assist with, uh, with those recommendations. So, in terms of timeframe, you'll see there's just these kind of information buckets, um, next to the, the recommendation itself, just to provide some more context to each recommendation. So, uh, the timeframe there with, um, obviously ongoing projects, uh, anything that was identified as short-term was, uh, less than five years. Anything that was long-term, uh, was more than five years. And then there is a fiscal impact category, um, in terms of what that cost would be. So, uh, zero being no fiscal impact beyond just staff time, um, and then small, moderate, and large fiscal impacts, just based on those expectations. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm not, uh, I'm not gonna bore everybody by, you know, reading all of, all of these recommendations. I just included, indications that way. If we want to go back and forth, um, if there's any comments or discussions specifically on, on any of them, they're here. But, in terms of environmental protection, you know, kind of high level, looking for approaches to protect any sort of sensitive, um, biological or ecological areas. Um, any sort of improved coordination, ongoing coordination between the city and the county, particularly in water quality and conservation. You know, stormwater management principles like that. Um, next slide, please. In terms of recreational activities, um, look, looking at improving connectivity, especially with the trails, you know, not only between or among the, the corridor, but also to the corridor. Um, also looking at improving, expanding the park system within that, that corridor. And again, looking at access to, to the river. That's one thing that we heard over and over again, is that importance of access to the water into the corridor itself. Uh, next slide, please. And then touching on that, multi-purpose trails and bridges, again, continuing to support bicycle and pedestrian connections, um, promoting the use of trails, not only for recreation, but also for commuting traffic. And then just looking at ways to kind of incorporate that trail section into the larger network of greenways and blueways, and continued support for the regional three-notch trail. Uh, next slide, please. Then Sharice is gonna take on home with the rest of these recommendations, and then, um, kind of the meat of what we were hoping for would just be discussion and, and questions at the end.
Thanks, Nick. Um, so, uh, with this recommendation, what the common theme seems to be with this one is educating, um, river users on the appropriate response to potential emergency situations while promoting safe and healthy behavior, um, was an overriding theme. Next slide, please. Here, um, enhancing and preserving the natural beauty and ecological functions of corridor was an overwhelming theme, but also the theme of, business to scale, small-scale oriented businesses, um, that offer, uh, recreational, um, enjoyment of the area, was one of the major factors while still promoting nature and preserving nature. Um, next slide, please. And with this one, educating the public about historic and cultural activities that shake the river corridor. Um, preserving those sensitive areas and engaging with local parties with significant, significant ties to the area, such as the Monakin Tribe, or, um, participating with the Monticello Local History and Cultural Department was a prominent theme here. Next slide. So, um, Nick and I are here and Sandy, um, to take your questions, if anybody has any questions for us, and thanks for giving us the floor.
Yeah, if you guys have mind, I would just like to offer a couple of really, really high-level comments. Um, just, just emphasize a couple of things. First of all, um, one, one of the things I want to emphasize is that as we were talking about the guiding principles, uh, one of the major themes of this, of this, uh, planning effort was that, there is not necessarily one predominant goal for the development of the corridor area. Um, so it wasn't, you, you know, you look at other communities and there's a economic development plan, or a preservation plan, or a recreational plan, and it was very important to the, um, stakeholders that we discussed this with, that, um, that it was a confluence, was one of the words that came out of, of all of these plans putting together and finding the right balance. And the other thing that I, I want to emphasize is that we really relied on, um, the existing land use that was already in place to guide that process. So, uh, Alamo Marl County and the city of Charlottesville had made it clear that they felt really that they felt really confident with the land use that had been identified in the river corridor. And so this was really an effort to support the other, um, activities and development efforts. And really refine that without going back and reviewing, and reviewing the land use. So I just wanted to address, um, two potential questions that, that might come up beforehand. So sorry for interrupting. Thanks for letting me jump in.
Oh, when we, when we met back in April, May, April or May, I forget when we met. But there was a wonderful graphic and it looks like things may have evolved. But there was a wonderful graphic that, um, you guys used that showed environmental protection encircling all the guidelines. And I liked that a lot because for me, that's the, um, the most important thing that we have to have to worry about. We can, we can do all this other nice development stuff, but we have to do the protection of that river, uh, first and foremost. Sounds to me like it, it got, um, there was an equalization process where environmental protection was made equal to all the other things like development and recreational. Is that what happened?
Um, no, we changed the graphic, but it was not our intention to change the priority.
Okay, so the question I want to ask is, is environmental protective still protection, still be prime directive? Because it was a prime directive when we met before.
Yeah, yes, it is. We, we changed the graphic, so there's not that circle, but we still indicated the graphic still indicates that if, because the discussion, that, that, that we had was that if environmental protection was going to be, um, was going to be a goal. It had to be the first, most prominent, important goal that we considered. Because all other efforts had to relate back to what are going to be the environmental impacts. So that is still, that is still referenced in the plan. We just don't, didn't use that same graphic to develop a, a different graphic.
Okay, Ms. Russell just, uh, text me instead. There's something on page nineteen I'll look at. But as long as environmental protection is the prime directive, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with what you guys get. Um, so would you like feedback from us? So why don't we go from right to left this time? So Mr. Laendra, any thoughts?
Oh, um, so let me start with, you've got about a hundred action items. Um, where do you go from here? Wha- what's the, I hate, I'm worried about creating yet another report that is just so overwhelming with so many action items that are so, uh, disconnected that it goes back on a shelf. What's the implement, implementation for this? Um, what's the prioritization of the action items within each category? Um, are there action items that can be logically bundled to create a less expense and also a bigger significance? Um, so what's, what's, where does it go from here with a hundred action items?
You guys wanted me to take a, take that one?
Sure, take a stab and we'll jump in.
All right, um, yeah, we, we talked about this with the, with the, um, with the technical committee. So, so one of the things that we're really going to be, to be, um, refining before we, um, you know, present a final, final draft for you all for consideration is identifying a few, um, really, uh, short-term, uh, goals, which will be our priority items, and those are what we're going to focus on. And, and Missy can, can jump in if she has any additional insights to, to offer here based on, on, on the city priorities. But, but my thought was that we focus on sort of the foundational, um, action items that are going to be needed to build off of any of these other ones. So focusing on things like inventorying, um, existing, existing infrastructure or conditions or, or systems or, or, or things like that. Um, looking, looking at where there's already a lot of, um, support, public support and low cost. And, and focusing on what those things are that we can do relatively simply for, um, you know, with, within existing resources and trying to really prioritize getting the things that can be easily implemented, implemented. Um, do you want to add anything, Nick Charisse or Missy?
I mean, that's, that's my understanding. I will add that several of those recommendations were, um, identified through the other planning efforts that the county and the city had undertaken. So there were some cross referencing that county staff and city staff wanted to be done within this plan, just to reiterate some of those priorities. Some examples from the, the Pantaps Master Area Plan. So, uh, those are already underway and maybe, you know, attaching some sort of, um, like status on those would be helpful within the, the implementation framework itself to contextualize that more.
Some of the, um, some of the things that, uh, led to the volume had to do with, um, a number of parks and recs. Uh, requests, um, to, for clarity, um, for potential for grant opportunities. And so, um, the, the goal was to try and be as comprehensive as possible to allow for, um, potential grant opportunities to support the plan. Um, but like Sandy said, we've got to find the, the easy, um, early wins to keep the plan moving forward.
Yeah, I work, if you're, if you're trying to be comprehensive, you end up, um, just everyone throwing up their hands to say, my God, we'll never get it this done. Um, so the need to be a really clear roadmap and how, if it's more than one locality working together. You know, how do they work together or, or, you know, call that out and call out how you're prioritizing these things. Um, I, I focused especially on the cultural historic sections. And, and frankly, I find it pretty weak. The, I don't see that, um, the, the historic, um, organizations in the county and the city were involved, uh, with this. Um, I, I don't see where the, the staff people from both places were involved and, and hopefully I'm wrong. Um, I don't see where the Department of Historic Resources was involved. Um, and it, the, and, and I think that would have helped with some of the assumptions. For instance, um, you, you just assume that everybody wants to be able to visit all these cultural sites. I expect there's some prehistoric, uh, sites along this river that we don't want to have people going with metal detectors, uh, uh, ravaging and destroying. Um, that may not be the case and it, and it takes more than just surveying, listing all the known cultural sites. It takes a, an analysis of how they're connected together and a history of, of the whole, um, area, uh, through, through time. So, um, I, I really find them to be piecemeal and disconnected and with no, uh, overall clear vision. Um, and I, and I also couldn't find the acronym for NPR. I presume it's not National Public Radio. Um, but it's not listed. Uh, anyway, that's my comment. Those are my comments.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Soliates, you've got some thoughts as well.
You do? Hello. It's pushing buttons. Uh, like Mr. Laendra, I, I found it useful to, uh, read with a focus on, uh, topics I have some competence in. I was focusing on racial and economic equity, uh, as well as affordable housing. Um, do you search for the word affordable in this plan? You get zero hits. That's disappointing. Affordable housing crisis big in this region, getting worse. Uh, would love to see that acknowledged in the text of this plan. Uh, goals listed, measurements listed, uh, would love a specific spark growth strategies. Talking about ways to, uh, prioritize affordable housing, give it, uh, advantages. Um, as for, as term, in terms of private land use, uh, ways to, uh, increase height and decrease disturbance, sort of smart growth principles. I would like to see that listed specifically. Uh, there's discussion early on about sort of an idea of incorporating equity into the text. Uh, and I do see it discussed a little bit in that offering transportation is kind of an equity thing, sort of. And that's admirable, uh, but I'd like more clarity on what you mean by that. Are we talking about racial equity? Are we talking about, uh, economic equity and how are we following through, not just in the provision of services? Uh, but in the way that we're providing it, uh, programming, uh, ways to make people feel comfortable, included, welcomed. Uh, and I urge you to, uh, work with, uh, city staff. We have excellent resources on this topic.
So a little more from you, uh, while, um, Soliates, you were, you were talking, thinking about, um, the, the work that we're doing on River Road. And you were talking a little bit about, um, protecting my river, um, with the riparian, uh, buffers. But also moving development back a little bit. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I was talking, thinking about sort of a, a, a green fingers idea, uh, establishing, uh, priority areas in riparian areas. And not just along the river, but also, uh, uh, waterway is feeding into the river, river, uh, that are prioritized for conservation value. Uh, and then prioritizing areas that are not there, uh, more for housing and other land uses.
And your thinking is that there, again, forgive me for telling you what you're thinking is.
Please.
I, I think you were suggesting that, um, again, moving things back from the river is important.
Yes.
Create, create, not just a riparian buffer, but also green buffer. And then you're thinking about, um, increasing the, the density, but even move that, move that, that development away from the river. So the river would not be impacted by that increased densities. Am I understanding what you, your thoughts were correctly?
Reducing i- impermeable spaces overall on private land. Exactly.
Okay. Uh, we're going that way, that way. So, uh, is, is Ms. Dowell? No, she's not. So we then go to Mr. Stolzner. No, Mr. Bob, Mr. Bob. I haven't seen you guys on the dice in so long, I forget.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm looking at this and I know I think, uh, most of the committers may have seen this before and it's been an ongoing process for a while. Um, try to keep my questions to minimum. I like, I appreciate that the core of this process has been the, um, kind of protection. And then the restoration and enhancement of the river. Um, I think that's very important. Um, I had a question on the development and redevelopment portion. Said there's an ongoing promote high quality design and positive visual impact in all new development and redevelopment projects that are visible from within the river corridor. Um, that's not visible from within the, like, the river pathway parks themselves, right? That's just the overall developed part.
Uh, let's see, I'm just.
It's number two under development and redevelopment.
Uh, permit hex code design. Well, the corridor, the corridor refers to the entire buffer, which is basically, um, the, the river. And then the immediately adjacent property. So when we say corridor, that's what we're referring to. Um, but, but really we're talking about the impacts on people who are, you know, using or recreating on or near the river.
Okay, I guess I just want to make sure I understood that right, that we're want to kind of keep that natural aspect of those trails and not, um, promote visible developments from.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that's accurate. Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's, that's all I had. Um, I want to echo, um, Commissioner Soliates's, um, point on equitable spaces and create, making sure we, um, have that somewhere written down that's more concrete. Thank you.
And now I think we're down to Mr. Soliates.
Boltenberg?
Did you repeat that?
Boltenberg? Me? I think, I'm thinking I'm up, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, actually, just quickly to follow up on, uh, what Commissioner Habob said. Um, are, are we saying that we don't want any development visible at all? Or that we want anything that is visible to adhere to aesthetic standards and, and kind of fit in? Yeah, okay. Um, so, um, I, I kind of two, uh, categories of comments. Um, so I'll start first with the transportation. Um, to me, uh, there seemed to be a tension in this plan, uh, behind the, the primacy of environmental protection. Um, and a very significant focus on adding parking, uh, directly next to the river. Um, and I, I think there's a couple of points that kind of loosely say, you know, let's get shared parking if we can, otherwise we'll do new parking. Um, and I, I think the only thing that actually talks about transit is about signage from transit stops, which I think is good. Um, but I think it would make sense to have stuff about, uh, you know, connections to, uh, the river area. Um, both transit and, uh, pedestrian and bicyclist. Um, I'm also a bit confused by this idea that adding pedestrian facilities means we must add more parking as well.
Do, do you want us to respond to that?
Um.
Or do you just want?
To, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, not necessarily.
I think there would be, now you're hearing your thoughts, uh, because I kind of agree with Rory.
Yeah, I mean, and one suggestion I might say is like, if we're gonna add any parking, like, that should be environmentally friendly, the extent the parking could be. And like be pervious pavers, you know, all that fun stuff. If we're adding, you know, not just adding tons of impervious asphalt right next to the river. Yep. So my second big category, uh, and then I'll probably say a couple other.
Right, why don't we, um, because they may want to, you want to give them a chance to, they, they may have some thoughts that may be helpful. You want to give them a chance to react? Yes, people say yes. So Sandy.
Yeah, well, well, I would, I would say, I think that's a very fair, uh, comment. And I think we felt that tension as we were developing the plan. Um, the discussions we had is that we hope that the new, you know, if, if, if we do are able to move forward with a, with a new, uh, crossing across the river, that that would actually reduce demand on parking. But there's also, um, you know, some, some experience that might indicate that that might become an attraction. I think our goal was really to focus less on, um, let, let's assume that we need parking and more like, let's just continue to assess whether or not we actually need parking. And so we're not necessarily planning it, but we're going to basically be aware of what those opportunities are. So that if we need it, um, we know where we can find it. I think that was sort of how we were trying to resolve the tension. The other thing I just want to mention is I think to some of the points about the trail connections, and I agree with that as well. I think some of those is actually addressed in the recreational activity section as well. So that was a little confusing. There was a little bit of overlap on there, but, um, I'm definitely writing down your comments. And if we can come up with a better way to make that connection, I think that's helpful to hear.
Yep. And yeah, I mean, I definitely noticed, you know, the assess before doing it and that kind of hedging. And I appreciated that. Uh, I do think it could be a little bit stronger of kind of avoid it if we can.
Sure.
But, uh, and then, so my other kind of big group of comments is about the public health, safety and wellness measures, uh, group of recommendations. Um, so I mean, first off, I found it a little bit jarring that, uh, the first recommendation or group of recommendations. And I guess that implies most important, um, is about kind of clearing out, uh, a group of people experiencing homelessness to take shelter under the bridge on the Albemarle side. Um, is that driven by, and, and that's not to say that the recommendations themselves are, are unreasonable. Um, I think they are actually fairly measured, um, but is the primacy of that driven by, uh, you know, a significant like outcry that you guys have heard?
This was actually, um, softened significantly from the original language, um, based on our conversations with, um, you know, the, the public, that, that, um, chief of police and, and other public safety officials. So I think, I think what we really wanted to emphasize is that it wasn't really about driving, um, people who are unhomed out of their sheltering locations. But it was more about, let's find them safer alternatives. I, I, I think that's really what we were trying to communicate here. So if that's not what's being communicated, that's really important for us to know.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I don't find the individual recommendations to be, you know, too harsh or anything, I guess. I mean, they're, they're pretty measured and reasonable. One point three, maybe could use some specificity about what those public health impacts are that we're mitigating. Um, I think maybe it would just help to move it down the list unless it really is the most important thing. Which kind of brings me to the public health and safety thing that I always think of when I go to the river. Like, I'm thinking about the dog who went into the river and died two years ago. Like every time I go, like floating down the river, two days later, we get a report in the daily progress that bacterial levels are elevated and like no one should go in. And, you know, literally every time I go, this at least comes up in conversation, even when I'm going with, you know, normal people who don't talk about land use and this stuff all the time, right? Um, so I was surprised that there wasn't something about that, like water quality and safety of the water. something about that, like water quality and safety of the water. And hopefully how we can make it better, or at least kind of more proactively tell people not to go in it sometimes.
Actually, that that was on the list. I'm just looking. Maybe it wasn't.
Yeah, Rory, as you're talking about that, I'm talking, looking at the recommendations regarding recreational activities, and there is a recommendation that we consider installing rapids. I mean, you're 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 in control of the meeting right now, but installing rapids, does that make sense? I don't know.
This is that that was initiative that I believe Albemarle Parks and Rec had been considering. So that's why it got included, because it was something that they had been investigating.
I'm sorry, Rory, you've got the meaning, you've got the floor.
Sure, that's a good point. I didn't really think about that. I know you could like install rapids. But anyway, yeah, the last point I'd say is, I was a little surprised to not see anything. I know you said we're kind of de-emphasizing land use here, but to not see anything about the River Road industrial corridor and the effect of that on the river and what kind of we think might be good for it moving forward. I mean, there is a lot of industrial development and impervious surface in the floodplain there. And it's, you know, arguably a really good place for opportunity for development, though also arguably a really important, you know, one of the few remaining places where you can actually have industrial, light industrial in the city. And I was just surprised not to see a mention. I don't know what to do about it, really. I think it would have been helpful if we had thought about that and adopted this plan, and that could have guided our comp plan discussion of that, but you know, that still feeling is pretty up in the air to me. Oh, and then the last thing is the history of the Free Bridge. I found that paragraph really confusing, and it like waffles between whether it's free or old like a few times. And I think I just use a quick rewrite. That's all I got.
Thank you.
So Ms. Russell, any thoughts?
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks for saying that, Rory. I also felt that the historicals, the historic section still felt a little disjointed. I do appreciate that that you all incorporated. I think a lot of the things that I had added in terms of additional historic resources. I think we could do a little better job. It seems like, you know, it's sort of like, here's the history. Okay. And then it goes into other elements of the plan, even though the Richmond, you know, the Richmond case study, really, I think says, you know, very beautifully that helping visitors develop a fuller understanding of different aspects of people's lives throughout the history of the region will help them establish stronger connections and understanding. I really think we're like not quite making that point in like, why are we talking about the history and 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 what could that mean in someone experiencing any any of these opportunities within the corridor? But I had one question, two questions. Let me say a comment. One comment, it looks like in since a previous edit, you sort of synthesized the recommendations to not have the sort of sub sub bullets and consolidated those. I did feel that the recommendation around partnering with the Monakin tribe to engage them seemed a little, I don't know, like presumptuous, like, and there was text under that that said, continue to foster a stronger relationship with tribe elders to support their initiatives. And I feel like that's a little, you know, support their initiatives, not expect a partnership per se, you know, maybe I'm being a little too sensitive there. And I'm really like so eager to jump into the howls of everything, because that's just where my mind goes. I want to go from, okay, we're saying this, but how? But I'll try to be patient. My question is, is could you all tell me a little more about phase three? What, you know, what would that look like? And what would that cost potentially?
Um, phase three would really be more of a design plan. So if you look at, for example, that the Richmond plan, they ended up with a master plan where they put things on paper and they identified this is where we're going to do this preservation effort. And these are the historical sites we're going to renovate, make it the public. So it's really putting those on paper, putting cost estimates down and really creating an implementation plan for this is when we're going to fund what. As far as the cost to develop that, I really have no no ballpark to provide for that. I don't know if Missy would be able to give you a back of the napkin estimate or anything.
So in 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 response to that, I guess I want to know more, like, it seems like a lot of the howls, at least let's look at design review, you know, we talk about sort of encourage high quality design. It seems to allude to, this was another thing I wanted to say, but I would really like to see more innovative and like going above and beyond state state required stormwater management to like daylight streams or not, you know, divert things underground, but we don't have any teeth to do that. So it seems like really the thing that would to Chairman Mitchell's question of like, or no, I'm sorry. Jody LaHindra's question was, wouldn't we need to have some sort of overlay come from this plan in order to implement these things? And when would be the time to do that? A lot of questions.
Well, again, do you want a response, or do you just want me to take your comments?
Response would be if you have one, that'd be great. If you need to think about it, that's cool, too.
Yeah, I think I I think our thought was was not necessarily an overlay to schedule out when exactly all of these initiatives could occur. And I I think one of the things we're going to be putting together is a next steps section at the end of this, based on your feedback. So that might be where we can reflect some of these if we want to move this towards being prepared to go into a master planning opportunity, we can kind of talk about what needs to be in place to do that. And maybe that goes in that next step section.
And maybe it's through the master plan work that, you know, a recommendation comes out of that that would lead to ordinance overlay or, you know, revised design standards or something.
Sure, yeah.
Thanks. That's all from me.
Hi, Mr. Palmer. Any feedback?
He sent us an email saying his internet cut out and he did not have any comments. He's trying to get.
The only thing I've got is, again, I'll reiterate my interest in protecting the the river as well as to the environment. And my other thought is that these cities we use to benchmark, I've been to all those riverfronts. And none of them are like troll, troll. They these riverfronts are very developed. Probably more developed than we're envisioning. So just keep in mind, when you're thinking about what we want the Ravenna corridor to look like, none of the five sites that we we visited are what we want to be. Good, good for, you know, thinking about where we could go, but we don't want to be that developed, I don't think, based on the emphasis on protecting the environment, the environment, protecting the river being the prime director.
Understood.
So circle back, any other comments from my 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 colleagues?
Yeah, if I could jump on that a little bit, I kind of sent us a in the plan, there's kind of two things that we're sort of saying for environmental protection. Not so much in the recommendations, but in the in the text of the plan, where one of them is like the, you know, the kind of physical and measurable environmental quality. And the other is this a sort of more vague sense of like, kind of being out in secluded wilderness. There was one public comment that was something like, it would be great to have, you know, more people use the park, but, you know, and I think it is important. I think it the prime importance is to protect the the actual water quality and environmental quality of the the river and the riparian area. But I also think it's important to like make it a more accessible place. And the idea of, you know, kind of reorienting nearby development toward the river, rather than the whole city kind of turning its back on it to the point that it's kind of like this industrial backwater, which actually ends up being really bad for the environment, is is, I think, a really good idea. And I think like if you had like, you know, apartments or restaurants that kind of fronted the river and had access to it, that would kind of create a positive feedback loop where we would care more about the quality of the river and more people will be able to use the river. And that might detract somewhat from, you know, this current sense of like, kind of being out in the wilderness, but you can get that on the James, right? You know, I think it is important that more city residents be able to use the river.
So I I agree to some degree, but I agree more with what Lyle was proposing. But yeah, we do have development on the river, but we have development with the riparian buffer, and then we have a little green space and then things away. I don't, I'd like that to see development right against the river like we see in Greensville or in Lynchburg or in Richmond. Nice group buffer, repair and buffer, then green space and then, you know, restaurants and stuff. With a nice little green space that people can use to do whatever they do, but a bigger buffer against that's how.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would agree with that. I'm not saying like we should like, you know, like you're saying Richmond, like a wall and then there's stuff and then there's the river like just having development nearby. And there's one recommendation, I think, that talks about this kind of front on the the river riverine area. And, you know, open up to it and provide access to it, and at least views of it, I think would be productive.
Anything else, Jody? Green? Liz? Oh, wow.
I do. It may be useful to talk about parking strategies of doing sort of parking under and prioritizing storage for more sustainable methods like bicycles. Also, getting into, oh, I'd just like your thoughts on affordable housing and racial and economic equity. I didn't I didn't get that feedback. What? Tell me your feelings.
Well, I don't I don't necessarily, I think we're trying to be mindful of the other efforts that are happening. So there were some, you know, other housing planning efforts that were happening. There's the land use. And so I think we were, it wasn't really in the scope of what we were discussing at that point. So we'll 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 need to probably discuss with staff after this point from both Albemarle and Charlottesville to see what those opportunities might be to, you know, pull some references into the plan. And then as far as racial equity and Nick or Sherry, feel free to feel free to jump in or or what we mean by equity. I don't know that we really had defined specifically what we were trying to do when when we were looking at equity, other than looking at what are the opportunities and the neighbors where there's under or lack of service or under service that that maybe is overlooked because those aren't the people who are participating as regularly at the process. So I think that's not, I think that's sort of an indicator of equity to me. Nick or Sherry, do you have anything else you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'll say I'll touch on some of the work that the NPO is doing specifically an equity and transportation study. And there's obviously overlap. We know these things don't happen in a vacuum, right? So that's one component, looking at access, which, you know, is not analogous to equity, but, you know, there's some some ongoing work to be able to build kind of an assessment tool of of how you know, certain trip generators or tractors. So that could be defined as that river corridor, it could be, you know, parks along that that corridor and looking at transit access service, walk shed, you know, analysis of, you know, what's within a 10, 15 minute walk, and then how those then fit within you know, demographic data that we have at the block level. So there's work that's that's ongoing with that that could possibly be tied into kind of that more specific realm within the context of this corridor.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Chrissy, what would we like to do next? Are we, have you gotten what you needed from us or?
I believe so. We've got a number of comments and we'll work with the group to to work on how best to integrate. I think one thing I'll note is a lot of the the comment areas that you all noted were things that the steering committee spent a lot of time discussing and trying to sort through. As well as we're working to try and make sure we're representing both the city and the county. And some of the things that you all came up with were things that that one or the other may have been more focused on and you know, it's it's, I mean, we're trying to to balance balance those things out and make sure this is valuable for both partners as part of this. And so, yeah, no, I think you all had some really, really good thoughts to add in there. Some of the things may be beyond the scope and maybe some things that be can be considered as either recommendations or some next steps. So.
I I think there would be value for us and my my colleagues, if you if you if you have the catalog, if you don't, that's okay. If you have a catalog of things that may be beyond scope, we know that so that we don't keep pushing those issues. If you don't, it's cool.
Yeah, well, we'll we'll work through that definitely.
I understand. Don't do, sorry for putting you on the spot. When does the county look at this?
I I think they're still trying to determine their process for for what they're going to 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 how they're going to walk it through the their process. There was some debate over whether they would be adopting it as amendment or a standalone plan. So we'll have to let you know once we know.
Okay, so they have not had a presentation like this yet.
They have not.
Yeah, let us know so that we can kind of watch it. It'd be good for us to know how they're thinking as well. Any other thoughts from my colleagues? Okay, Ms. Chrissy, are we, have we gotten everything done? You want to get done?
I believe so. Just reminders, we've got the work sessions on the 24th and the one on the 31st. I also polled the commissioners concerning the one date they don't have on their calendar. And then we have our standing fourth Tuesday work session. So I'll work with the consultants on both of those dates as potential for another touch point with the commission as we're moving forward with all of these things that we have moving forward with. I will note for September that we have two public hearings currently in the works as well as working through some conference of plan items. So, yeah, that's going to be kind of a a full meeting.
Okay, cool. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
That's a move.
Second. You guys want to be, no, you are second. Second, okay. Motion adjourn, second, we adjourn. See you guys soon. Thanks, guys.